Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yes, okay. Okay, and we're recording, right? And that's a benefit through by Ten American.
The previous administration.
That's right. That's right. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:32. Thank you very much. Recognition of members present. All councilors are present. Note that the city clerk is not present. However, we are recording the meeting. And we do have on hand in his first appearance as city administrator for the city of Saco, Brian Kainrath. Thank you very much. And he will be recording the minutes for this evening. I'd like to, excuse me, invite everybody to stand and join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. There is, excuse me, there is no general comments. There are no committee correspondents to council at this moment. Public comment? Nobody had signed up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak before the council? School board member Shimon? Please remember to speak into the mic clearly and state your name and address for the record, please.
Right, this is a liaison, not as individual.
Yeah.
A liaison from the school board. The Wednesday, we are having a, part of our meeting will be to discuss in workshop, communications with council, community, everything. To try to improve, and this is one of the things that the, that the school board has in common between everybody, is to improve communications within the community so that people get accurate information about what's going on and so that we can bring better results by getting people to work together. So, this is a, one thing that came out of the last meeting that we feel is very important. And it will be addressed first thing. One, some of the considerations involve having a part-time or some kind of person who acts as a person who has responsibility for getting the word out. So that things don't go unanswered. As you know, the problems of serving on a board is something you don't see when you're not on a board, is that there are some things you can't talk about. You can't talk about legal issues, you can't talk about personnel issues. However, these issues come up and somehow they have to get addressed. So, the, the hope here is to work out a way, which I understand on the city side is being, already being addressed, is how do you get communications out to people in an effective way and so that there's a dialogue. So, that, I just wanted to tell you, that will be on this meeting on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment before we move on? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item seven, that is the approval of minutes for December 2nd. December 16th, is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Menthorn has motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Archer has second. Any discussion? Any changes? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gay? Uh, council, Councilor Gunn. That's twice I've done that, I'm sorry.
We still like it.
Sorry, Joe. Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed, seven zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, there is one item, appointments to Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Would anyone like to pull that item?
Yes, I would.
Is there a second to pulling this item?
Second.
There is a motion by Councilor Copeland, second by Councilor Menthorn. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
A seven oh motion passes. Moving on to agenda item eight, excuse me, nine, and that is the new business, agenda item A, public hearing renewal application for special entertainment permit, Saco Eagles, number 3792, to have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, you do. Saco Eagles area 3792 has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. Permitment, the permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable fees and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93.2. I move to open the public hearing.
There's been a motion, there's been a motion and a second motion by Councilor Menthorn, second by Councilor Copeland, to open a public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
That is a motion, seven oh, to open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this open item? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Saco Eagles, number 3792, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Councilor Menthorn has motion, Councilor Copeland has seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Seven oh, motion passes. Moving on to agenda, agenda item nine, subsection B, public hearing renewal application for special entertainment permit, Northeastern Hospitality Management LLC, doing business as Ramada Saco. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, yeah. Read it, Marshall.
Councilor Archer, you have made the motion.
Yes.
Can you read into the agenda of the motion?
I can. Northeast Hospital Management LLC, doing business as Ramada Saco, has applied for a renewal of their special enter permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Subsection 93, Tac 2. I move to open the public hearing.
There's been, there's been a motion and a second. Motion by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Copeland. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Been a seven oh motion, seven oh motion to open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on the open matter? Seeing no request to be heard, back to Councilor Archer.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Northeastern Hospitality Management LLC, doing business as Ramada Saco, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Second.
There's been a motion by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Menthorn. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Seven oh, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item C, Habitat for Humanity Project Presentation. Do we have a motion?
Do we need one? Don't need a motion, it's a presentation.
Just for the audience, there is no agenda item. This is not an action item. We're hearing a presentation for the first time tonight under new business. This will become an action item at the next meeting on the 13th.
Good evening, my name is Amy Nucci. I'm the executive director at Habitat for Humanity York County. And I'm here with Bruce Locke, who is a board member and chair of our site acquisition committee, and Kristy Kenny, who is also a board member and on our site acquisition committee, and also the owner of KW Architect in Kennybunk. So, thank you for allowing us time to speak tonight. And I also just wanted to express our appreciation to everyone in the city who's helped us so far. Everyone's been very helpful when we've asked for information. So, thank you. I'm gonna start with just a little overview of Habitat for Humanity. I know most people recognize the name, but when it gets down to the details of how we work and what we do, sometimes folks are a little fuzzy. So, Habitat for Humanity York County builds strength, stability, and self-reliance in York County through our affordable home ownership and weatherization programs. Since 1985, we've completed 29 home ownership projects and weatherized over 100 homes. Historically, we've completed an average of one home a year. A couple of years ago, we've decided that because there's such a great need in York County for affordable housing and affordable home ownership opportunities, we're trying to double that historic average to complete two homes a year right now. Our biggest challenge to that goal is really land. Land is not affordable in York County. On the map, on this presentation, the greenhouses represent homes that we've completed and the blue homes are where we either have property or where we're currently working. The Limerick property and the Kennybunk Port properties were both donated to us by generous individuals. And in Sanford, we were able to purchase some land affordably. But really, as I said, affordable land is our biggest challenge at this point in time. So, the way our program works, whoops. We use volunteer labor, donated materials, and funds to build or rehabilitate simple, decent, and affordable homes. One of the biggest misconceptions about Habitat for Humanity is that we give our homes away. That's not the case. Our homes are sold to local low-income home buyers who typically don't qualify for conventional financing, but we do sell them through an affordable mortgage. I'm not gonna get too much into our funding, you know, mechanisms here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about how we structure our mortgages. And then the monthly mortgage payments or mortgage proceeds go to support the construction of future Habitat homes. So, our home buyers are really partners in the work that we do. There's a lot of text on this slide, I'm not gonna go through all of it, but it speaks to the amount of due diligence that we do when we are working to select a family. Families apply to Habitat for Humanity and our three main criteria are need, willingness to partner, and the ability to pay an affordable mortgage. So, applicants need to have a demonstrated need, either they're living somewhere that's not affordable or it's unsafe. They need to have a willingness to partner with Habitat for Humanity. Every family who buys a Habitat house does 400 hours of sweat equity on their home, either helping build their home, volunteering in other ways with Habitat, and also, everyone is required to attend a first-time homebuyer class at York County Community Action. The third criteria is ability to pay. Folks do need to have a modest income to be able to afford the Habitat mortgage, 'cause like I said, we don't give our homes away. So, in addition to creating affordable housing for families who need it, Habitat for Humanity also contributes to the local community. Not only through purchasing materials locally and engaging local tradesmen, our home buyers also pay property taxes. We estimate that right now, our 29 homeowners pay an average, sorry, pay an estimated $64,000 annually to York County municipalities in property taxes. And since 1985, they've paid over $1 million in property taxes. So, as a Saco resident, I'm a little sad that there's not a Habitat for Humanity home in Saco yet. But we've done some really great work recently with Age Friendly Saco to support Keep York County Warm, which is our weatherization program. Through this program, we go into owner-occupied homes of low-income homeowners and we do some air sealing, insulation. We build storm window inserts that you see in this picture that go on the interior of windows. And this has been a really fantastic partnership with Age Friendly Saco. They've helped get us referrals for clients and they also have helped us with home assessments and organizing window wrapping days at Thornton Academy where age-friendly volunteers work alongside Thornton Academy volunteers to wrap the windows to go into homes. And it's just a really cool multi-generational model that we're hoping to replicate in more communities. And through that program, we've done 24 homes. So, with Hancock Lumber beginning the construction of their new store here in Saco, they have expressed an interest in partnering with Habitat for Humanity to build a Habitat home in Saco to celebrate the opening of that store. We've been looking for an appropriate piece of land here in Saco to execute that project. The one that we've found, we've identified two, Marguerite Road. We feel that this is an ideal lot for Habitat for Humanity to partner, to build on. We're asking the city to consider breaking off the piece of the lot that currently has a playground on it and donating the remainder of the land to Habitat for Humanity. Each home that would be built on this lot would contribute an estimated $4,000 in property taxes annually to the city, representing over $120,000 a house contributed to the city over the life of a third-year mortgage, in addition to creating opportunities for civic engagement in the city and more affordable home ownership in Saco. And that is the end. I'm happy to take any questions, if there are questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from the council, looking to the right and looking to the left? Councilor Johnston?
I'm still trying to figure out where that lot's located. Where, where in the vicinity of Saco is it?
It's off of Flag Pond Road.
Okay, I know exactly where it is.
No, okay.
Councilor Copeland?
No, she can go ahead. I'm still collecting my thoughts.
Councilor Copeland?
I'm looking at a aerial map here. Is there an existing structure there?
There's not, no. There's the portion of the property that has the playground on it.
Can you point that out to me, please? Up, up here, if you don't mind. Okay, so it's not a park with a playground?
The park is right up here.
So, what we're proposing is to break off the playground and that remain city-owned.
So, we will keep that park?
Yes.
Thank you. So, it's back here.
Councilor Copeland, any other questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Johnston, did you have any further questions? Councilor Johnston, did you have any further questions?
I guess the question I have is, how did you arrive at that lot versus others?
Kristi and Bruce, you guys can chime in too, but we had a list of city-owned property that we went through and examined the properties. And this was the one we felt was most suitable. I don't know if you wanted to...
With the help of different people from the city of Saco, we got a list of Saco-owned properties, which we looked at. Maybe at least 15 or 20 properties, which is town-owned property right now that is vacant or has... Doesn't have anything built on it currently. And this property, we identified as being suitable. There is the little playground, the community playground, which we are proposing to break off. And the remainder of the lot would be what we were looking for as a donation. So, it's currently one big lot, and only that portion that is the playground on it is being used. The remainder of the property is just woods. And it's actually in a really good residential neighborhood, suitable for this type of project.
Do you guys only do single-family homes, or do you do multiple-unit homes? The reason I ask is, several years ago, there was a proposal before the council for a senior housing project at 32 Market Street, and that never came about. And so, I'm still... I've been looking at that lot for several years now, thinking that it's still... It's probably better suited, in my opinion, because if it's a lower-income family, you're going to be closer to transportation, downtown, and your needs. But the lot's large enough to build out multiple houses on it. So, it was just an idea. I saw the email you guys had sent a while back, and I never got around to answering it, but that was the lot that I was thinking about. And so, I don't know if that works for you, but I could see multiple units there meeting the needs of the Habitat for Humanity. So, I don't know if that works, but I'm not trying to delay anything.
No.
But I just, I think that's... There's potential there.
I think it's something we could take a look at. We don't currently do multifamily housing. We currently are just doing single-family housing. We are looking into, in the future, potentially doing like a duplex or something of that nature, but we haven't...
Yeah, that's what originally was proposed, was a series of duplexes.
Okay.
Maybe in the future.
Then just add that we actually have a long-term goal to do multifamily housing, not multifamily, but multiple, single-family housing. But as a small chapter that York County is right now, as you've seen with subdivisions, the cost to do the development for a subdivision is more than what our chapter can handle at this time, since we're just growing at one to two houses per year. So, we're not there yet, and I would really encourage you to look into some of the other nonprofits for affordable housing, because it would be great in the city. We just... We have looked at that model financially. We can't do a subdivision yet.
Right.
But it's in our five-year plan, so don't count us out.
Excellent. I mean, I think it's important what you're doing, and I think that affordable housing is a growing issue that many people in the city don't recognize, because we seem to be an affluent community. But particularly in my ward, I know the needs there, so... Thank you for doing what you're doing, and I'd be looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Council Archer, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Has this been brought up in any of our committees? And if not, can we refer this to the committees?
Which committee would you like to refer it to?
Well, I guess this would be multiple. It could be Parks and Rec. It could be... No, I guess just Parks and Rec.
Let's bring up the Parks and Rec Director, Ryan Sommer, please.
To answer your question, we haven't had a conversation in the Advisory Committee. Our December meeting was canceled. We have a January 27th meeting, which will be on the agenda for that, but we haven't had the conversation yet.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to hear feedback from that.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, the... According to the new... The new business, old business agenda, what we would be looking to do is have a vote to move this to old business or to action item for next week. Or that would still give the Parks and Rec Committee the opportunity after that, before we have a final vote on it, if that makes sense. So, if there's a... If there's a motion to move this to... We can also move it to Monday, the 27th? Tuesday, the 21st, if that works as well.
I think we need to table this until next week and then have an action item that we can read that would be in the agenda for the public to consume before we can move it forward.
That's what I'm looking for, is to set the date for it right now. We can put it on the 13th, or we can move it to an alternative date that's after the Parks and Rec meeting that gives the availability to hear from the Parks and Rec Department. Director Sommer? So, is the council open to moving this to the meeting of Monday, the 27th? Or 20... Is Monday the... Monday, the 27th?
Wait, no, the 27th is something else. The 27th is a meeting regarding Cascade Falls Bridge. So, it can't be then. I guess it is.
Is that all right, the 27th? Monday, the 27th for the council meeting? Monday, the 27th? Okay. Well, hand vote?
Clarification. Just because we're doing this new format, 27th, it will stay under new business to be discussed.
It'll come up as first reading, but then also Parks and Rec will have their availability to waive it, to weigh in, excuse me.
So, then that would put three weeks later, or two weeks later, two meetings later, for the actual vote-ish, give or take a week. I'm just with the new format. It's just trying to get a clear...
Yeah. The 27th, and then one more meeting, I think, is it's an item where we're giving the authority of the city administrator to sign a contract given land. So, I think it's a one meeting. But I'll get clarification on that. But we'll move it to the 27th with a hand vote. All in favor? That's a 7-0 hand vote to move it to January 27th. Amy, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, that is Item D, Council Rules and Order of Business Presentation. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Article 2, Section 208B of the City Charter, the council is required to develop its own rules and order of business at the first meeting of the newly-elected council each year. On December 16, 2019, the council voted to make the following updates. Update the structure of the meetings to hold workshop as new business portion of the meeting agenda. Change the structure of council emails to be first-letter, first-name, and last-name at sacomaine.org. Gender neutrality updates and additional language changes were made. Upon further review, additional changes were made throughout the document, which are highlighted. I move to add approval of the rules and order of business to the January 21st council meeting agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion, and a second motion made by Councilor Menthorn, second by Councilor Copeland. Discussion on the item. Just as a point of clarification, Councilor Copeland has sent additional updates for the rules and order of business to the city administrator, and he will look to incorporate those into our 21st agenda after the staff has time to review those. Councilor Johnston, question?
I just was wondering if Councilor Copeland would like to go through some of her edits.
We'll look at some of those edits after the brief presentation by City Administrator Canrath.
So, I just had a real quick run-through of some of the changes and major highlights that you see in the updated document. So, it's about 10 slides. We'll just go through quickly. So, the purpose of Saco's Procedures Manual, of course, Rules and Order of Business is required by the Saco City Charter. This document provides clarity for how we conduct our business. This presentation has the purpose, as I just said, of highlighting some updates and some changes that have occurred in this current document. Page references throughout this are based on your council or in your packet, or the 1620 packet, and also the actual document pages. And just to note, that still pending is our tours of facilities, especially with new members of the council. So, in the Overview of Basic City Documents section, the only thing to change is the addition of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, and that's on Pages 4 and 11. You'll see that note. So, for Saco, City Council General Powers and Responsibilities, we remove the reference to EDC, as it's a non-voting liaison position for the council. And another note, with the November 2021 election, we will have each year a municipal election. Therefore, language around the deputy mayor filling a vacancy will have to be changed. Support provided to the city council. Minor changes were made at the recommendation of the IT Director regarding the Office 365 language. Email addresses, as pointed out, were updated as of December 2019. And iPads will now be provided to councilors with necessary software. Any additional hardware or software will be at the expense of individual councilors. Financial matters, there are no changes in this section. For communications, a few new notes. Letterhead must adhere to City of Saco Brand Style Guide. When using official city letterhead, councilors should take care. It's no individual opinions that do not represent the city or council as a whole. When using social media, we have another section on social media you'll see in there. When using social media, councilors should be mindful of the tenor of their comments and display the same sense of decorum they would when conducting official city business. And also, the Public Records and Retention Act comes into play. All information posted and other activity conducted on social media sites is subject to public records, the Public Records Act and retention, record retention guidelines. So, interaction with city staff and officials, there were no changes there in that section. City Council Meetings, public comment language has been moved to Section D, Order of Business as a definition. In Section D, Order of Business was updated to define all the items that are in Appendix A, not C. That's currently referenced in the document on Pages 22 and 29. Old Business has now been changed to Action Items. There are some other small clarifications. And just to note, that members are recommended to take the time to review voting procedures and motions outlined in the document. So, this is possibly a discussion point. This is talking about adding new business, oral presentations, allowing public comment during new business. Currently, the practice is to have public comment on the agenda as we normally do at the beginning, where any member of the public can speak on any topic they wish. So, this would modify that procedure a bit. So, that's an item for discussion. Procedural Administration, biannual review has changed to annual review. And another point for discussion, the discussion on adherence to rules and order of business. This, I can read it if you'd like. Adherence to administrative procedure and process procedures. The council has delegated the mayor responsible to discuss on behalf of the full city council. Any perceived or inappropriate administrative action with a council member, the mayor will discuss with the council member the action and suggest a more appropriate process or procedure to follow. After this discussion, if further inappropriate action continues, the mayor will report the concerns to the full council. This is language we could talk about further and could be fleshed out more. So, that's another possible topic for discussion. Additional Training and Resource Materials section. Available documents in the city administrator's office has been updated, and a further review of the policies should be considered by the council at a later date, possibly. In the Leaving Office section, Section C3, again, as we saw before with November 2021, there'll be each election year... Each year will be a municipal election year, and therefore, language will have to be revised to reflect that. Definitions, no changes there. And lastly, appendices. These have been reordered, and several irrelevant items have been removed. Appendix A, Order of Business for Council Meetings, has been updated to match language found in Section 8. And in Appendix B and C relate to boards and committees, and these should be reviewed and updated possibly at a later date also. So, thank you. That was a quick run-through.
Thank you. So, Councilor Johnston had asked about Councilor Copeland's updates that she sent in an email late yesterday evening. Councilor Copeland, would you like to go through each one of those individually, or would you like to just have it come forward as part of the 21st Agenda Packet after staff has had time to fully review the proposed amendments?
I would be fine with that, except Councilor Johnston has asked to go over them. We can do it very quickly. Some of them are really just minor little grammatical things. There's only a couple of content changes.
Feel free to share.
Okay, looking at New Business, Item D, Exhibit 1, and Page 4 of the document, Page 11 of the PDF. I would just remove the word "while" in the second paragraph of Section 3A, the second paragraph. And on the... So, it reads, "While the mayor has some additional ceremonial and administrative responsibilities, as described below, in the establishment of policies, voting, and in other significant areas, all members are equal." So, I suggest removing the comma and putting "all council members are equal", just as a point of clarification. Okay, on the next one, which is Letter B, Role of the Mayor, second paragraph. It says, "Traditionally, the mayor has also been assigned by the council." And I just... I don't see what the point of saying that is. And then on Letter C, Deputy Mayor, it refers to Robert's Rules of Orders 10th Edition. We're currently... Currently, the current published edition is the 11th. So, that's just a quick little change. Going down to Letter E. Qualifications a member must... And this is about Appointment of Advisory Bodies. A member must be knowledgeable in the areas of interest of the Board/Commission. And I think that's not something that's ever really come up. So, a lot of boards just have people who are interested in serving their community. So, I don't know if that's something we want to pay more attention to or remove. So, that would be something that would be worthy of discussion. Number 5 in that same paragraph says, "No person should serve on more than one board/commission at a time." Well, I'm a liaison to four different commissions, and I see numerous same faces. So, either we need to comply with it, or we need to remove that language, because it doesn't match the reality of what we're doing.
I think that refers to citizens versus councilors.
Right. No, I'm not talking about me. I'm saying I'm there to see all the same faces.
Yeah.
I'm not saying me.
Councilor Copeland has the floor, please.
All right, and going back up to Letter D, Appointment of the City Administrator, number 3. It says, "The city administrator is responsible for all personnel appointments within the city." I think that we should add, "Council expects to be consulted at least a week in advance for department head appointments or terminations," since that's been a rough spot in our recent history. history. Just another piece of communication. Let's see.
If I may.
Counselor Copeland, will you suspend?
I will.
Counselor Johnson.
I guess my issue with that one, I feel it starts to really go against what the Charter states, which is interference with the administration itself. You'd have to change the Charter versus doing it through the Procedure Manual.
Okay.
But that's a conversation we can have, I'm just...
This is why I suggested that maybe we can tape, or we can put it as part of the 21st when the city staff has had time to review it and come up with reasons why some of these things might not be plausible, or, but...
All right, no, that's fine, I've got...
Counselor Copeland, would you like to continue?
Counselor Johnson, would you like me to continue?
It's up to you. I mean, I can, I can either get with you and explain my reasonings for not agreeing with some of yours, or I can just talk to the administrator, or he can take your edits and submit them to us, and he can make his changes.
Well, I think that we should opt for conversations.
I would agree with you.
So let me continue on then. All right, Roman 4, Support Provided to Counsel, Letter B, says, "Except for the purposes of inquiries, the mayor, the city council, or any of its members shall deal with city officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city administrator solely through the city administrator." And I just question that solely, I've had conversations with the, our wonderful new city administrator, and maybe instead of having that very specific language, leave it a little bit more open-ended, that, so in other words, you could send an email to a department head, but copy the city administrator, so he is well-informed. So instead of solely going through the city administrator and having everything bogged down and giving him, you know, I just think that it's more practical to do it the other way, and that would be something for him, but that was a point that I was bringing up there. Letter C, Email and Computer Access. And number four, it says, "A packet containing information on how to access the email system and a detailed instructional packet is provided after inauguration," and I just was not provided with that. So, then going down, am I still on Roman 4? Roman 4, Letter C, number, or Letter F, there was the added line regarding iPads, replacement of charging cables, adapters, and peripherals is at the cost of the counselor who has issued the device, but I would suggest that replacement of lost items are at the council's expense, the councilor's expense, but if there's something wrong with it, I don't know why us basic volunteers should have to be buying more equipment for the city. Letter, and I would propose to add another letter there, making it Letter G, since Saco is a, and this may be controversial. Did you want to talk about it?
Counselor Copeland, will you suspend?
I will.
Counselor Johnson has a question.
Again, based on your edits you sent, you had Letter E, which was mail deliveries, and then down at the bottom, you had, "No other materials will be considered at the next coming council meeting. If new matters arise and not included in the councilor's packet, that issue would be added to the next regularly scheduled meeting for council attention." I think most of the time, that probably makes sense, but oftentimes, we see time-sensitive things or items before council that they need to be at that next agenda, so, you know, I think having some language about time-sensitive should be added if we're going to add that. And then G, which you hadn't gotten to yet, I'll let you go ahead.
Counselor Copeland.
Thank you for that feedback, and yes, I did miss that one, Letter E, and I completely agree, and I struggled with that, and I didn't have the language to put in there, so I left it so that we could discuss it and put the language that's appropriate, because clearly there has to be an avenue, that if we have something that we have to do, that we can. The point there was getting stuff on Monday during the day when I can't look at it.
Understood.
So that was that. So, Letter G, and this, Letter G, I'll just go right out and say that this is another thing where I just put it out there to put it, to get a conversation started, so whether I throw these numbers around, they mean nothing to me. I did do a little bit of online research, and it seemed like a reasonable number, but I'm not set on any of it. So here goes, "Since Saco is governed by its elected citizens who, for the most part, have other full-time employment and time constraints getting to the meetings after work, the City of Saco will provide a simple, healthy meal for the councilors prior to every scheduled city council meeting, the cost of which is not to exceed $75 per meeting and will be paid for from the admin budget, order to be provided as well." I suspend for Counselor Johnson.
So while I don't personally necessarily have an issue with this, I think doing this in this manner conflicts with the City Charter, where it states that we are to be only compensated what it states in the Charter.
Is that compensation?
It is, it could be conceived as compensation. I'm not, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but the Charter specifically states, we've had this issue before years ago, where individuals wanted something else in lieu of our compensation, and the Charter reads pretty specific, and I think maybe Tim could weigh in on that. I also would say that if we're going to do that, it should be done through the budget process and not through our Procedure Manual, which we could do.
Anything further, Counselor Johnson?
No, not one.
Counselor Copeland.
Well, I, if pushed, I would agree that the city solicitor could weigh in on this. I don't see this compensation, but I'm not a lawyer. In terms of putting it in the budget, through the budget process, that's fine. I just know that there are some health issues, and I think that an employee of the city would be accommodated.
I agree.
And we're almost essentially employees, so I, that's where I'm coming from.
No, I think it goes to a larger discussion that I think we've tried to have in the past, which is, our compensation is not adequate.
Right.
And that's probably something we should discuss in the future, but again...
I think I have that queued up here, too. All right, so I'm glad we had that discussion. Our next one up is Roman 5, Financial Matters, A, Mayor and Council Compensation. So it says that the council, let's see, where is it? A seated council may not increase its own salary, but now that we're going to be on a rotating thing, how are we to do that? I was just wondering, because I, I feel strongly that people should not be restricted from sitting up here because they can't afford to sit here.
Right.
So I think that everyone should have the opportunity, and if it's just, you know...
So if I may explain it the way I've always read that, it said, "A council can take a vote to increase its compensation. It then has to go to referendum, which has to be approved by the voters," which means that a seated, this current council cannot...
Oh, I see.
See, so you can't send it to a special referendum, it gets approved, and then immediately that seated council gets compensated that new rate, it's whatever the next one, so...
Thank you for the clarification, that makes much more sense. But I think that that's something that we should do, so that we have, you know, wonderful young people who might want to participate in government, and that might be a way to make that happen. All right, Roman 6, Communications, number, Letter B, number two, it says, "After the city council has taken a position on an issue, official correspondence should reflect this position. If, if the mayor or a council member is still functioning in an official capacity in voicing a minority opinion, they may continue to use city letterhead." I just, is it that erroneous comma that is throwing me off here, or, but that's just something, please look at that language, I didn't understand what it was saying. And then there was an, on Letter number four, there wasn't, just an open-ended, like, the sentence ended with correspondence by, and then there was no period, there was no more, so that was just a little type of thing. And on C, Social Media, and so it goes on, and it talks about all the social media stuff, should this be linked to the social media policy? Or, actually, what I was asking for was, where is the link to the social media policy? I don't know that I've seen our social media policy, I'm sure it's buried somewhere on our website. And this, I felt the same for the retention policy and guidelines. I think that if we're going to put this document out, we should refer to them with a link so that they can be looked at. And on, on their letter, new Letter E, number two, it talks about local ballot-measured initiative and referendums. At times, measures that affect the city council policy may be placed on the ballot. There are restrictions regarding what actions a city council or individual members may take on ballot members, measures, such as, I don't, I don't know what that sentence means, so if we could just have clarification on that, I would be grateful. Next one is Roman 7, Interaction with City Staff Officials, Letter D, on Evaluation, I, it says, "City councils have utilized," and I just think it should say prior city councils, it's just grammatical. Going down to Letter G, number four, it says, "To keep city council and staff appraised of court rulings and legislation affecting the legal interest of the city." Well, I don't think, I don't recall ever getting any reports like that from our city solicitor, so perhaps that's something that we could bring up with him and make sure that we're up to speed on those issues. Then, number five, Staff Roles, in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "The city administrator will make every effort to respond in a timely manner and a professional manner to all requests made by individual council members for information or assistance." And I can just remove that, I'm fine with that the way it is. Roman 8, City Council Meetings, seems to me that that language in Roman 8, Letter A, number one, is duplicated in number five, so. And Letter B, Placing Items on the Agenda, Mayor or City Council, it says, "The mayor or a city council member may request an item to be considered on a future agenda. Such requests should be made to the city administrator for review and action." I suggest that it should be made to the city administrator and the mayor for review and action, and the same with the Saco City staff. Then, number five, in that same, talks about all commentaries, it's under, it's titled Deadlines, "All commentaries and supporting documentation for council meetings must be turned in by 2:00 PM, two Fridays before the scheduled meeting." That, I, I don't know how that's ever going to work, if we, you know, I think that's something that the administration team should look at, it doesn't seem like that's realistic.
It isn't.
Letter D, small Roman 7, Approval of Minutes, it says, "Such minutes shall be submitted to the council for approval and a correction in a draft form at a subsequent meeting under new business." It is the policy of the city council, only the mayor, it just, it's missing words. And it goes on to talk about consent items, and it has an et cetera. I don't think et cetera belongs in policies, because it is extremely vague and can be interpreted in numerous ways, I think that should just be removed. And then there's just other plurals that don't belong plural, and we don't want to even talk about that, and... Letter F, Voting Procedures, it says, "No ordinance, resolution, or motion shall be passed or become effective without an affirmative vote," but it doesn't say from whom, so I think it should be clarified to say from the council as a whole. And Letter H, Development of Agendas, "Given this agenda development schedule, it will usually require at least one week for the preparation of a report requested by the city council. Complex reports, of course, will require more time to prepare, and an estimated time of completion can be provided to the city council," and I would add, "which shall be no later than the Thursday prior to the next scheduled meeting." That just gives the council an opportunity to actually look at it. And then another reference to the 10th Edition of Robert's Rules, when we're on 11, and Well, that's the end of my extensive late-night reading.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Does any other counselor have any additional request? Seeing none, there's been a motion to approve these and set the, suggested motion for January 21st. It's been motioned by Counselor Menthorn, seconded by Counselor Copeland. Any further discussion?
Mr. Ed, this time, there was significant changes, and we didn't get this document until late last night, I believe 10 o'clock, and I thought it was kind of of courtesy that we don't get these, and we just got it this way. So it actually asks that there's a delay, because I haven't had time to actually review all these because of the late submittal last night.
That's why we're moving it to the 21st, the 21st, January 21st.
For the first reading.
For the reading.
Okay, that's fine.
That gives city administrator time to review the document, suggest any issues. That gives council time to review the document, suggest any further additions that they like, or any issues with current requests. Any other requests? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Hi.
Counselor Birdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Copeland.
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail's.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0, you'll see this again on the 21st. Next Agenda Item, Agenda Item E, Dedication of Open Space at Ross Ridge, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gunn.
Thank you. On November 20th, 2017, the city council accepted the last remaining segment of road in the Ross Ridge subdivision. At that time, two open space lots had not been accepted, as remaining work was to be completed by Chamberlain Properties. The applicant has since fulfilled the punch list of items to the satisfaction of both the Public Works Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. City Attorney Tim Murphy has reviewed the deed presented by Chamberlain Properties to accept the two remaining open space lots. Should be noted that open space acceptance is not required to be presented to the city council. However, because this applicant has fulfilled the conditions, I thought it best to bring this item to the council for its acceptance. Ross Ridge was built as a 75 residential lot subdivision, with much of the infrastructure accepted by the city in the years 2014 and 2017. Suggested motion, sorry, I move to add Ross Ridge open space acceptance, lots 46 and 47 to the January 21st council meeting agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Gunn, seconded by Counselor Menthorn. Before I ask her, I'd just like to thank Director Sommer for the work that he's done on this, and I would also like to thank the residents of Ross Ridge for their patience as we've worked through many years with this issue, and I would like to thank Counselor Johnson, who has also worked with me on this issue and getting resolved for this issue, so thank you. Any further counselor discussion? Counselor Johnson.
Well, thank you for recognizing that, you know, I have tried to get this corrected. Unfortunately, I believe it was, what, 2018, 2019, when previous administrator was here, and this came up, and we had issues with the field not being to standards, I'm assuming it is presently, which is good that was... it is presently, which is good that was rectified. But at that meeting, I had stated several other issues that seemed to be still unrectified, and I don't see anything in this documentation that says it has been, which is concerning to me, because it seems to have become a pattern. I just saw this similar situation at the last planning board with a different subdivision, where issues that were right on the site plan were not addressed. So if you want me to read them all off again, I can do that, or I can get with the planning department and try to figure this out, we can table it, it's up to you.
Why don't we bring down Director Sommer to see if some of these other issues have
So I'm going to need a refresh of us, because I'm not sure what the other issues are. I know I had, for me, was to hold them up on making sure the grass was, the field was properly maintained and so forth, but.
Right.
So if you can read back some of it, I'll.
I will. So the other issue that I had asked to be given proof of, and again, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody or placing blame on anybody.
Yeah.
I certainly don't want to be accused of having a vendetta, as I have been in the past from this particular developer. Fees, were the fees collected? It was $26,250 for rec impact fees that was required to be collected.
That I would not know.
Okay.
That, that wouldn't come to my department, that would be.
That would go to code.
That wouldn't be my, I would not know that answer.
$11,100 for intersection impact fees that were supposed to go towards improvements at Moody and Main. Though it was something else I had asked to be, you know, provided before accepting this, this land. It's, it's hard to explain from sitting here, because there's a lot going on with, with this subdivision. I'll do my best. On the site plan, it required that 2.74 acres of active rec facilities must be provided. I'm still questioning, have they met the 2.74 requirement? Obviously, you can't address this standing at the podium.
Could you email me that?
Yeah.
So I can at least have that better answer for you?
And of particular interest I brought up last time, that was concerning to me, lot 45 on the site plan, which currently has a tennis court on it, which doesn't appear to be being donated or given to the city.
Correct.
Well, who's going to take ownership of that?
It's part of the, to my understanding, that's part of the homeowners association. That piece of property wasn't part of the agreement.
But the tennis courts were to meet the rec requirement.
Correct, but I believe that was still part of the homeowners association.
Right, but that homeowners association still doesn't own that land. My concern is that you have a requirement that was being met, that's now in private hands.
Yep.
So what benefit did that do to the city? It's still not in private hands. And now, as I expressed last time, I had a concern with, there's a requirement for a trail system. The only trail I've ever found out there goes from Trailside to Woodman Ave, goes directly through lot 41, or 45, which is apparently going to be an HOA, but the requirement is that it's publicly accessed.
There is.
So are they going to take on that liability?
There is potential trail system going down by the, by the pump station.
And that goes back to the last meeting, again, that I expressed, and I didn't get an answer for this, which is, my understanding going back years, was that there was supposed to be a trail system through lot 46, which is along the brook there, Goose Fair Broke, where the, where the pump station is.
Yep.
Which is why, in the conditions of approval, it states, "A walking trail accessible to the public consisting of wood chips and a suitable signage," doesn't exist, "shall be established within the subdivision. Signage informing the public of the trail's existence to include a trail map and the availability of public parking along the access drive to the sewer pump station shall be installed and found acceptable by the city." There's no signs out there indicating that.
There's no trail system there.
And there's no trail.
Correct.
And again, I'm not, you know, pointing fingers at the applicant or the, the current owner, but my understanding going back 2008, and this could be hearsay, because it came from a property owner at the time, was that the trail stu, trail system was to go through that lot, not the one that's connecting Trailside to Woodman. That's just a cut-through from the tennis court to the other road. That's not a trail system, by my standards.
Correct, and, and I, and I always say this, and at least for right now, the trail system, from the previous planner that was here, and Emily, when we talked about it, was going to be going down by the transfer station, up by the pump station and so forth down in that area. For us to maintain it and build it, or even Elliott, you know, it, it wasn't something that was necessary, you know, when I came on, it was, I was getting hit with the, I think, lot 47, I think that's where the, um.
Yeah.
The open field space is and so forth. The trail system was something that, eventually down the road maybe, but it wasn't something that, for us to look at it as a necessity, because again, what I was trying to do is focus on the intention of at least getting that lot, that play system surface playable.
Yeah, I understand that, and again, it's, it's not on you, it's, I don't even remember if you were at that last meeting we had, but I, I had gotten with, with Mr. Sutherland at the time to try to rectify this, and it's, it hasn't. And for that reason, I still wouldn't accept any of this land, because you're asking us, or the applicant's asking us to, to accept lot 46. Well, if there's supposed to be a trail system on it.
Well, I, I'm not accepting, I think, under Tim Murphy's, in my understanding, lot 47 and 45 are where the, the place, where the open field is and the retention pond, that area. Those are the things that I, what I've been asked to, to look at to, to.
Right. I'm sure that's for your department, but this quitclaim deed lists lots 47 and lot 45, or 46, rather.
Are they, 46 is the.
46 is the one down by Goose Fair.
Okay.
47 is the ball field, what was supposed to be a ball field, that's actually not a ball field.
Be an open space.
And 45 is this one that's supposedly supposed to be in HOA ownership. The problem is that when I pull the tax maps, I still see lot 45, lot 46, and lot 47, all as one parcel.
Okay, I.
I understand. Somehow you just got suckered up here. And so these are the things that I want clarity before we accept anything.
Right.
And that's what I said a year-plus ago, so here we are.
The, the fees, I couldn't answer the question on, but I can look into everything else.
Emily, would you like to, come on up?
When these, some of these questions had come up before I was planner, I had looked into them with Zach Mosier, the former planner. A lot of them had been answered by us internally, and we can, I, what I can do is go through each question and give you a response in detail. If you can just forward me a summary of your questions, I'd really appreciate it, so that I can get everything. Most ever, everything that you've discussed has been addressed. We usually do a conditions of approval review before we send anything like this to the council. A previous, at the previous planning board meeting, the recommendation question came up about the HOA on another project. That really was not a condition of approval, the board looked at it that way, but that wasn't something that came up in the conditions list. But I do agree with you that it needed to be followed up with, and we've since been working on that one as well, but I just wanted to clarify for that. But we, we often look at the conditions, and like I said, I'm happy to provide a full summary of the conditions of where everything's at, and kind of give you an Excel spreadsheet like we did on Park North, as long as I know exactly what questions you feel haven't been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can, can we make sure that, that spreadsheet goes to all the council, right? Thank you. With that said, the suggested motion is moving this to the 21st. Once again, it'll come up the 21st. We'll, we'll have information that was requested by council presented at that time. So this motion has been made by councillor Gunn, had been seconded by councillor Menthorn. Any further discussion? Seeing no, councillor Archer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just, at present, I'm currently concerned, however, this is just to put it on the agenda, so I'm not, I will vote yes to this, but if any of these are, if I'm not feeling comfortable at the next meeting when this is being voted on, I may be asking for table, just to make sure that this is all done. I know you did, the mayor did extensive work in his last council about addressing this issue, and I definitely want to hear some more before we actually push this forward. But at this time, I have no concerns of putting it on the agenda, but I may have concerns in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Copeland.
Yes.
Councillor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail's.
Yes.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
7-0 motion passes, you'll see this again on the 21st. Next up is item F, street acceptance, Francis Libby Way. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Councillor Purdy.
Mike Mazoin, Mazoin Development has requested review of city street acceptance of Francis Libby Way. Francis Libby Way was developed as part of the Libby's Landing subdivision, approved by the planning board in 2017. This portion of the subdivision includes 10 residential lots. Mike Mazoin had initially requested this review with the Public Works Department last year, and has since followed up on the punch list from Public Works. And on comments about the as, as-built plan and deeds, the planning and develop, development department have received the formal request from Mike Mazoin in October 2019. Since that time, the department has followed the process outlined in chapter 186. There are two warranted deeds, one for the road and the other for the open space lot, which houses the stormwater wet pond, and was approved on the final subdivision plan as land to be dedicated to the city of Saco. The planning board made a positive conditional recommendation at its meeting on December 5th, 2019. The recommendation the planning board has forward a positive recommend, recommendation to the city council. I move to add, city street acceptance request Francis Libby Way to the January 21st council meeting agenda.
Second.
There's been a, a motion made by councillor Purdy, seconded by councillor Copeland. Any discussion? Councillor Archer.
A few months back, I know some of the new council members may not be aware, remember or be aware, we had certain, I don't want to call them rules, or we put some guidelines on how we accept city streets. Was that ever solidified, and has that, has this project met that demand? I don't know who would.
We'll look into the, to the answer to that. Any further discussion? Once again, this is to move this to the January 21st council agenda. Roll call vote, councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Copeland.
Yes.
Councillor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail's.
Yes.
And councillor Johnston.
Yes.
7-0 motion passes, you'll see this again on the January 21st agenda. We had pulled the consent agenda item A, appointments, so now we will take that up, and is there a motion? Councillor Copeland, I believe you wanted to table this item.
I'm just pulling it up. Yes, I would like to table this item.
Is there a motion to, second, to tabling this item?
Second.
Motion's been, a motion to table's been made by councillor Copeland, seconded by councillor Archer, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, councillor Gunn.
Just a simple question of why we are tabling or wanting to table this motion.
Further review. The commissions haven't been contacted about this. Usually, the applications go in and go to whatever advisory board or commission that the people are going on to, and it hadn't happened here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, councillor Archer.
Aye.
Councillor Purdy.
Yes.
Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Copeland.
Yes.
Councillor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councillor McPhail's.
Yes.
Councillor Johnston.
Yes.
7-0 motion passes to table this item to, until a future time. Next up on the agenda is agenda item 10, administrative update, city administrator Kane Rath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with the public works facility, RFP, beginning tomorrow, January 7th, the city of Saco will be seeking proposals for the sale and redevelopment of a parcel of city-owned real estate located at 351 North Street, currently used as our public works facility. The city, acting through the planning and development department, seeks qualified, seeks a qualified developer to purchase and improve the property. Proposals will be evaluated by staff and ultimately city council on several factors, including but not limited to, ability to maximize the economic development potential of the site, negotiated sale price, and additional evaluation criteria that can be found on the city's bids and RFP page on our website. To be considered, developers must have been a development proposal in this response to this request for proposal by February 12th, 2020. Soul Source of Digital Sky, as a courtesy to this council and the general public, I want to let you know that prior city administrator authorized staff hiring Digital Sky for the camera system and access control at the new public works facility without a competitive bid process. Under our Soul Source clause in the purchasing policy, this exemption is allowed to be approved by the city administrator, as the company is the installers of our current camera solution, and we are looking to integrate the access control built into that system to centralize management of access control and security cameras. Also of note, while they are wiring up the cameras and access control, we are retaining the company to install the building network infrastructure. This will eliminate the need to have two different vendors in the building costing additional labor and streamlining the process for network install. Strategic planning sessions, we have tentatively scheduled our, our council strategic planning session for our January 27th council meeting. We're possibly working with a consultant in that to facilitate the process. At the staff meeting earlier that day, we will conduct a similar exercise and strategic planning sessions, develop their goals and top priorities. You may have seen an email, I think, from the mayor, asking you to please submit your responses on, on goals and strategic planning to myself or Tori Gorman at your earliest convenience. And lastly, general assistance position, we've had, due to staffing change in the city clerk's office, we are needing to fill the part-time role of general assistance administrator, and we are currently exploring that possibility of sharing a position with the city of Biddeford. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to begin those discussions, some more to report on that later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 11, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment? Councillor Archer?
Two items, one quick. I will not be here for the January 21st, I'll be out of the country. And the second item.
Enjoy your vacation.
I will. It's a short one, but it'll be fun. The second one is the GA. We have a committee, a joint Biddeford-Saco committee, and I don't believe this was mentioned to us, just wanted to put it on your radar, just, just, I know you're new, and it's not really complaint or anything, just more for your information. And being part of the GA appeals committee, I'd be worried about how much of the share we have. Biddeford has a significant amount of general assistance demands where Saco doesn't, so a fairness of balance would be, would be, should be looked at, so that's it.
Thank you. The councillor Purdy, councillor Gunn, councillor Copeland, councillor Menthorn, councillor McPhail, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. So, I haven't had a chance to actually read this request for proposal yet, but as you're all going to start to find out, I'm kind of a stickler for process. So the city code requires, per chapter 81, that any city property that's going to be considered for sale goes to council first. It also should be re-managed, the planning board for their opinions. And while I may agree with the sale of this property from years on the council, I don't know the opinions of the rest of this council. So I, I think this is a little cart before the horse.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Councillor Copeland, you have.
I also, I understand that it's the city administrator's authority to hire and fire, but I do have some reservations with our general assistants, someone in charge of that, it's a very sensitive matter. We care deeply about our residents, and I would just cause, ask for some hesitance in that regard.
Thank you, councillor Copeland. Anything further? Moving on to agenda item 12, executive session, is there a motion to move into executive session?
Yes, Mayor. Be it ordered, the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405-6, see pending real estate matter regarding a public safety annexed building.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's been made by councillor Menthorn, seconded by councillor Copeland, move into executive. A motion's been made by Counselor Minton, seconded by Counselor Copeland, move into executive session. Hand vote. All in favor? Seven oh in favor of moving to executive session.
Counsel, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, we'd like to come out of the session, be it ordered City Council, exit executive session, pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6c, pending real estate matter regarding a public safety annexed building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn, and second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail's?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Seven oh, motion passes to come out of executive session. Is there a report from executive session?
Yes, Mayor, there is. I move that the City Council authorize the city administrator to begin negotiations for the future site of the public safety satellite facility and to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement contingent upon the approval of the bond for the public safety satellite facility. The city administrator will present such purchase and sale agreement for City Council approval at a later date.
There's been a motion made. Is there a motion second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn, and second by Counselor McPhail's. Any discussion? I see no discussion. Roll call, vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail's?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson. Motion passes seven zero. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion's been moved. Second? Is there a second to adjourn? Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Menthorn, and second by Counselor Copeland. All in favor, hand vote. Seven oh, motion passes. We're adjourned at eight thirty-four.